This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles, here. Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Echols.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together today and we thank you for the privilege and the honor of being elected servants and public servants. Father, we ask that you would grant a liberal portion of wisdom and mercy towards us, Father God, that we may function in a role that's both conforming to the task ahead, Father God, and pleasing in your sight, Father. We ask that you would continue to bless this great city, Father God, to touch this great city, to create a spirit of unity. We thank you for all of the progress that we've made, Father God, and we ask that you continue to help us manage through any opportunities that lie ahead for us. Through it all, we give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise for it. In Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee work session and City Council meeting held on February 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February 20th through the 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of these accounts.
Proclamation, Ms. Mayor.
It was a busy day upstairs. It's pretty busy down here today as well. There's all the football team here, coach, coaches. Why don't y'all come up and stand around this way before we can get you on TV, on the camera?
And I'm a big smiler, so I want you guys to smile.
We're proud of you guys. We're proud to have you here today and the coaches. I think Coach Scott's over there somewhere. I can tell you a quick story. I played three positions when I played football, end, guard, and tackle. Sat on the end of the bench, guarded the water bucket, and tackled anybody trying to... Okay. Whereas the Gadsden City High School football team finished its 2014 season with an excellent record of 10 wins and 3 losses. Some notable highlights of this season include defeating Auburn High School, ranked number 5 with a score of 34 to 28, and Bob Jones High School, ranked number 1, 44 to 23. The Gadsden City High School Titans football team ranked number 1 in the scoring offense in the state for Class 7A throughout its 13 games and broke the school record for points scored in the season with 506 points, an average of 39 points per game. The Gadsden City High School Titans football team went on to win the Class 7A Region 4 Championship, defeating Hazel Green. The Titan football team participated in the Alabama High School Athletic Association playoffs, defeating Hewitt Trustville 54 to 37 in the first round. In the second round, they defeated Oak Mountain, ranked number 3, with a score of 45 to 28, and advanced to the 7A semifinals before losing to the eventual state champion Hoover. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, join with the Gadsden City Council and hereby proclaiming Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015, is Gadsden City High School Football Team Day in the City of Gadsden, and urge all citizens to join with us in congratulating our players and coaches for their hard work, their discipline, and their success achieved on the football field this past year. All right.
Well, we just grew up quick. Would like to thank Mayor, the City Council, just for the support they provided for us. Thanked quite a few things for us since I've been here at Gadsden and a lot of those things. Had a lot to do with that type of support with having the top season we've had this past year and look forward to a lot more of it. So, thanks a lot.
Okay. That's out.
Okay. Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Sturdivant to come up, and I guess Ms. Sturdivant and any of the family want to come up? Come on up. Ah, come on up. Get y'all on TV. Okay, Mr. Sturdivant is a fine citizen that likes to help out on things. He takes care of a lot of things for us over towards Green Pastures and we appreciate all that you do over there. Whereas Chapman Sturdivant was born May 1st, 1935, to the late Frank and Hattie Sturdivant in Selma, Alabama. He was one of nine children. He was educated in Birmingham and Gadsden City Schools and graduated from Carver High School in class of 1955. While attending Carver High School, he ran track for two years and played football four years, serving as tackle and end. During his younger years, he was a member of Sweet Home Methodist Church. Later, he joined First Baptist Church where he met Margie Jean Prior and they were married February 17th, 1957. They are the parents of Michael and Vera, Anthony, Dolores, Kim, Louis, and they are the grandparents of Mika, Jillian, Terranee, Anthony Jr., the late Tyson Sturdivant, and Kayla and Desmond Harris, great-grandson Aldis Carrington. Chapman has served as a First Baptist Church as Sunday School teacher of the senior boys' choir and trustee board. He was active in the PTA at Booker T. Washington Elementary School and served as scout leader of the Goodyear Troop 358. Chapman invested time with the neighborhood children by transporting them to school in bad weather and taking boys hunting with his sons. He's a member of the NAACP, the Voters League, and attends City Council meetings regularly. He was instrumental in making the citizens in the Green Pastures community aware of the Free Weather radios from the EMA and distributed the radios to the residents who requested them. Chapman Sturdivant and Henry Brookins were advocates for the drainage system that was developed to handle flooding in Green Pastures community, the sidewalk along Springfield Avenue, the entrance sign to Green Pastures, and for bringing Hughley Park to the area. He is retired from Goodyear Time Rubber Company after 42 years of service in 1997. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim February the 28th, 2015, is Chapman Sturdivant Day in the City of Gadsden, and I'd like for everybody to congratulate Mr. Sturdivant. And I will say, just from knowing him since I've been mayor, we have more volunteers and neighborhood folks like him, we'd have a lot less problems here. So, we need you to get involved and use him as a good example. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I think Mayor, City Council, Park Recreation, anyone else that had things to do with this plaque being presented. I was at a, had a program the other night, the other evening, and I wound up in the Twilight Zone. If you ever watched TV years ago that had the Twilight Zone, see, I was supposed to have been there to introduce my daughter as a speaker to the young people. And when I got there, things didn't look right. And I was bummed by, I was the person. I wound up being the person, it's only thing. So, I really, really appreciate the fact that people thought it left me to present this award. And what really got me when I looked out in the audience, I saw my son, his wife drove down from Virginia, and I had granddaughter flew down on the other side of Washington. And I knew then something was wrong. So, eventually, I looked at my wife and I said, hey, what's going on? She's sitting there, and she just starts smiling. So, I knew then what, I had been hit. Hit hard than I ever been hit in my life. I mean, I lost it. So, I'm really very appreciative of this award and the people that take enough of me to give me award, although I was doing what I want to do, what I like to do, and what we should do as community people. Thank you a lot. Appreciate it.
I believe what they used on you, they used to call it bait and switch. Have one other request here. I'd like to take a moment to honor Corporal James M. Stanley from Gadsden, Alabama. Tomorrow, March 4th, March 45 years to the day that Corporal Stanley gave his life trying to save his fellow squad member, James A. Parker. Parker was wounded and pinned down by the Viet Cong and Corporal Stanley was trying to reach him, but neither survived. And we are thankful for Corporal Stanley and all those other veterans that made the ultimate sacrifice for their country. Actually, my uncle Sherman did the same thing, my daddy's older brother. He was killed in April of 45, about two months before I was born. And you see on TV a lot this about the wounded warriors and all. I'm telling you, that's really some great charities to send some money into them for all the things, because when you watch some of those guys that's lost legs and arms and that kind of stuff, you just can't, we can't imagine how that is. So, anytime we can do that and help them out, we need to be sure to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfinished business? We have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1517 Harrison Avenue in District 5, Anita Blankenship Phillips and South Trust Bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves a burned house. We started working it in December of this past year. Been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
That's in my district and I have not heard from anybody, so I move that we'll abate the...
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Brian, how's the inside look on this house? Sorry? Inside, how's the inside?
Well, the fire took about the middle portion back, so there, it was an old structure before the fire.
Brian, when we do this next time, it looks like it was a nice house, but we need a picture of the bad part of the house, if we could, you know what I'm saying? Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 2205 Chestnut Street in District 6, John LaMasters, Rodney Ward, and Rex Rome Simmons being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Council President, I do have one thing I need to ask Mr. Harbison. Mr. Harbison, there, a garage behind that house right there. Can't remember. Little, small garage behind there. Okay, the block before that, then. You might want to check that that house is condemned also. And at night, somebody's storing a car in that garage in the back and they've got a padlock on it just at night. I don't know if they're hiding the car or what to do, but somebody's putting a car in there. You might want to check on that for us. That's all I have.
Our final public hearings are resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed and we have three locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of those may come forward. Item number 11 is 106 Pine Alley Street, that's in District 1, State of Alabama, and Tony Smith. Item number 12 is 1006 Hermosa Avenue in District 3, State of Alabama, and Stephanie Gwynn, aka Stephanie Sumter. And item number 13 is 2001 South 11th Street, that's in District 5, State of Alabama, and Aleem Smith Vick. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all three resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three resolutions.
Item number 14 is a resolution awarding bid number 3283 for a 911 digital logging recorder. The Purchasing Department and Fire Chief have recommended awarding the bid to Quality Recording Solutions, and the amount is $87,221. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
I believe this is a 911, well, it's really an upgrade and an update to the 911 so they can better take 911 calls.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution appointing members to the Gadsden Cultural Arts Foundation. This appoints Elizabeth Harden and William Holler III and reappoints Catherine Martin for terms expiring January 1st, 2017. It also appoints Shane Ellison and Kristy Knowles and reappoints Wilbur Masters for terms expiring January 1st, 2018. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business that we have in?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to ask for your consent to consider Resolution 064. It's a resolution authorizing application for funding through the Edward County Community Development Committee.
Second. Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Yeah, move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, if there's no discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards, okay, any more?
Thank you, Council President and Council Members. It is, we're getting in back into the first Friday swing of things. This month, March, four years ago, we started what we call Downtown Gadsden Gives Back. We invite the, any nonprofit organization that would like to participate, not necessarily to raise funds, but to raise awareness of what they do. You'll see people out there, Junior Achievement, they'll have their bowling pins and balls and having a little bowling thing to promote their bowling tournament. The Boy Scouts, I believe, will be cooking s'mores. You can buy Girl Scout cookies, I know that. We'll have them out there. And just different organizations that wanted to participate, I think we have about two dozen that will be out there. It'll be a first Friday on a small scale, but we will be closing Broad Street from 2nd to 7th Streets, invite the classic cars to come in. The weather Friday is supposed to be much better than it has been in the last few days, but I think the high Friday is going to be 52. We kick first Friday off at 5:00 and will be through by 8:00, but invite everyone to come out and support the local businesses and also to kind of get an awareness of some of the nonprofits that we have. You might want, some of the people might want to come and learn how they can volunteer to help with these different organizations. So, that's kind of what we're there, this is, like I say, this is the fourth year we've done that, and it does seem to bring some awareness. The merchants, some of the merchants will donate some of the proceeds of their sales to United Way, who will then split the money up through the United Way Agency. So, just, it's that time again, and we hope to have some nice weather and we hope to have people to come out and see what's going on downtown. So, please do, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Is there still anyone from the EMA? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Hefflin, Public Information Officer with Gadsden Edward County EMA, with a weather report. Councilman Cannon did a wonderful job, pre-council. I wanted to elaborate on that just a little bit. I think most of you have a graphic, if not, I think. Does everyone got one?
Yeah.
If you look at that, and this is as of 5:37 a.m. this morning, so we'll have another briefing at 2:00 today with a statewide EMA, with all the counties involved, the whole state. So, this could change a little bit, or it might not change at all. But right now, today and tomorrow, we really have a dichotomy of weather. It's going to be, it's going to drop 35 degrees between Wednesday and Thursday morning. And so, today and Wednesday will be warm, rainy at times, thunderstorms possible Wednesday, but not severe, not expecting any severe weather. As a cold front passes early Thursday morning, temperatures forecast to drop below freezing and rain is, freezing rain is forecast transition, transition to freezing rain. The current thinking by the NWS Birmingham is that less than 1/10 of an inch of rain, freezing rain accumulation is possible, likely to cause hazardous problems with travel conditions Thursday morning, especially on bridges and overpasses. Some power outages and down trees are not expected with this event. Their confidence is low right now. Like I say, that could change this afternoon. Temperatures expect to hover around freezing Thursday, so any travel problems may continue through Thursday night into Friday morning. Forecast is, of course, is subject to change, the National Weather Service's current thinking. Keep up with this same, you can get the same graphic with the Councilman app with the National Weather Service, which is www.wether.gov. Wednesday night into early Thursday, it's going to affect mainly between 3:00 and 6:00 a.m., mainly the western and northwestern counties. We're looking at Thursday morning from 6:00 a.m. to affect us, if we have any impact at all, between 6:00 a.m. and noon Thursday. Temperatures won't rise much above freezing Thursday. So, but then, Ms. Kay, it's going to be sunny and hopefully dry. It will be sunny and dry Friday, unless they got it all wrong. If it's not, it's the National Weather Service. But it is high 48 Friday, so it should be ready for Friday. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Please, please be sure to heed these weather warnings. They served us well the last go-around. I think we were able to avoid some bad situations by having some notice in terms of the weather. So, again, please heed these weather warnings. Now, we're down to remarks by the Mayor and Council. Mayor?
I just wanted to tell you how, what a good job Public Works, Police, Fire, and everybody did during the snow. They were pretty busy and took good care of things. I didn't have any calls, so I assume everybody turned out okay and was happy with the results. But thank them for all that they do for us.
Councilwoman Toles?
I'd like to encourage, promote, and support the after-school program that we heard about this morning from Gadsden City High School. And I said this morning that you will always continuously hear me talk about education, talk about our young people, because in order for us to have a good city, we've got to have a good workforce. And so, in order for us to have a good workforce, we've got to educate everybody. And I was very excited and surprised. One of my former students is a football player. In fact, he was from Togo, Africa, and his name is Yehu Wale, and he started with me in kindergarten. So, I just want to encourage everybody to support our city, support our young people, and Gadsden High City School students who need that after-school program, go. Thank you.
Amen.
I'd like to second what Dr. Toles, Councilwoman Toles, said. And I was supposed to have my community meeting Thursday at Thompson, but due to the weather, I'm going to go ahead and cancel that. So, we don't want anybody getting hurt or trying to get to a community meeting. So, thank you.
Councilman Billis?
I'd like to also echo on what the Mayor said. The city workers did a tremendous job of clearing the main streets and some of the residential streets. I mean, they really, really worked this week on the snow. And he didn't get the calls, but I got a bunch of them, so I'll pass them on to you the next time. And I'd also like to recognize Mr. Blackwell. Would you stand up, Mr. Blackwell? He's the principal of Gadsden City High School. It's in my district, and we're so proud of him as a principal because I've been down there many times to talk to him about situations. He's not giving me the answers that I want sometimes, but he's giving me answers. So, I'd just like to commend him publicly for all the things that you do for our high school kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Billy, who's the lady on the back row back there?
That's my wife.
I think you might ought to recognize.
My wife, Sheila Billingsley, who is my secretary.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything to date.
Councilman Reed?
Reed must be sick.
As is apropos, I second the motion. Absolutely. I got to say, what Sherman and Billy said about the employees and how prepared they were this time is unbelievable. I mean, they got the job done. And Chapman Sturdeman, son, you made us all proud.
So, I do want to echo that sentiment regarding, and to be quite honest, I think the mayor was out riding around when we had the storm the last year, and they performed well again last year as well. I mean, so they have really gotten the swing of, and the hang of what it means to be responsive and be prepared, so it makes life much better for all of us. So, do want to second what was said about Principal Blackwell. He, you know, there is rare that you run across an educator who has that genuine concern for children. You know, a lot of, a lot of times educators are doing their jobs, but there's not, there's not necessarily a passion. But he possesses that passion, and he's almost like a politician in that he knows the names of all of his students and their parents and knows their birthdays, and, you know, he puts most of us to shame with as much as he remembers. So, again, we appreciate what he does, and those kids love him. And so, just keep up the good work. You know, just because we're complimenting him doesn't mean that we don't have opportunities, but you want to recognize people when they're doing a good job. And I do want to second what Dr. Toz noted, or Councilwoman Toz noted. We've got some opportunities, and there's, we have a great after-school program that's being proposed. They put the work in to go out and secure a three-year grant, and we need to maximize the potential of that opportunity and improve our scores and...
You want to let them come up? I had talked to them upstairs about maybe explaining it for just a couple minutes?
Sure. There's no objections from anyone up here?
Jay, the guy that's counseling Mr. Rockwell.
Mr. Bowden.
Appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, Council, that you've given us today. We have been fortunate enough to start an after-school program at Gaston City High School, and we're very blessed to have that program. Doing after-school tutoring, we're doing mentoring, we're doing credit recovery, we're doing ACT prep, and this has a potential to affect a lot of kids in a lot of different ways. We have over 200 students on the roll at present time. We find that a lot of times our students, for example, they're doing a term paper, but they may not have a printer at home, and they don't have any way to be able to print their research paper. We're able to help them with that. We also have a lot of students that go home at night, and they may not have a parent that can help them with Algebra II homework, or trig, or geometry, or an English paper. So, we have the resources available after school to be able to help those students with that. And our main purpose today is to make sure that everyone knows this. We've got it on our website, we've sent flyers out to all of our students, but we want to make sure that everybody in the community is aware of what we're doing, because we think that the potential for this program is unlimited. And I thank you for your time.
I'd have one final announcement. Due to the NLC Conference in Washington, D.C., the council will not meet next week, so our next scheduled meeting is for March 17th. Okay? If we have nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.